We're going to get going here, folks, so please join us in the flag salute. Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay. Adoption of the agenda, any deletions, additions, or changes?
Make a motion to adopt.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we've got an operating menu here. So first thing, I guess, city attorney, we have anything to report out from closed session?
There's direction given to staff.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Brings us to oral communications, number one, for any item that is not on the agenda. And I don't have any slips up here, does anybody wish to speak on any items not on the agenda? Not seeing any takers, we'll move on to consent calendar. We do have a request from a community member to remove item H. And so if we could take item H, does anybody want to remove anything else out?
No, that's what I wanted to take out also.
Okay.
With that, I'll make a motion to adopt agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and I.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, okay. All right, item H, so Anya, come forward. Do you have some questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, I had an exchange with one of the authors of this agreement, and he answered my question. And so I find that the agreement that you're about to adopt is going to serve our city in the future as well. And as long as we have good representation on the board, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Anya. Terry, did you have a question on it?
Basically, I just wanted a little clarification from staff on the portion that's talking about the donor funds. When it said the residual of the excess funds from the donor cities, which there's three, gets split 50/50 within the jurisdiction or within the remaining cities. That means that 50% of their donor funds stay within their system for approved uses or for any use?
Well, any use that would be related to the library.
Okay.
And then the other 50% goes to the system. So being a non-donor city, and that term actually will no longer be used with this agreement, but being a non-donor city, we will, we benefit by that.
Okay, but it doesn't designate those funds into any extracurricular or special programs? Or is that going to be donated or used in the lower income, the lesser districts?
No, it just goes into the JPA budget revenue that serves all the libraries in the system and will be determined by the governing board on an annual basis in terms of how the monies are used. But it just, it increases the pot of money that we all have to operate our libraries.
When I was on that JPA, it was quite the bone of contention
It was.
with the quote-unquote donor cities. And I'm surprised that this was the ultimate resolution on it and that it went over okay. I guess they figure 50% is better than, than none of it.
Well, it was a process, here's Amber, it was a process of, that went on for, I want to say, three years, the donor city committee, yeah, so we had many meetings over a number of years.
I left just before they made the donor committee to look at it. So that's impressive that they got that resolution.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know what, when I read it, I was surprised too. Because I knew some of the council members from the cities, they didn't want to give up that money.
No, they did not.
That's their money, we want it for our, even though they couldn't, even though they didn't have things to spend it on, I guess. But I'm glad that there was a compromise and it seems very fair. So, and Clay, you represent the city on that board.
Well, I was one of the governing operations member, operations committee members, myself and Kevin Bryant from Woodside were the two kind of city managers that were on there. And then the, there was a number of governing board elected officials on there from the affected cities primarily.
And I helped steer that along.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
And I want to, Amber is in the audience, I give the library management staff a lot of credit for coming up with ideas and helping kind of push the process along over a long period of time. And through, sometimes I think we were a little bit less than confident that we were actually going to get to resolution, but finally got it.
It worked out in the end.
Have all the, have the other cities approved their resolutions on the JPA changes?
It's only gone to one, East Powhatan, so it hasn't, this is only the second city.
Great, thank you.
But it was approved by the governing board, which was a representative of all the cities, yeah.
Okay. Counsel's pleasure on this.
With that, I'd make a motion to approve item H.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. You know, I know we approved item I, I guess as city attorney, I have a note up here to pull consent calendar I, because we need to amend the resolutions to insert the names on them. Do I need to pull that back?
I suggest you rescind the motion from the earlier consent calendar items and retake that without I. So then the new motion would be to approve all except for H, which you just approved separately, and I, which you would now like to pull.
Okay.
I'll make that rescinded motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we need a new motion to items A through G. Right?
A through H?
That was it.
Oh, G, we already approved H.
So moved?
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So item I, we're going to let float until, till we put the names in or what?
No, you could go ahead and announce, make the announcement now.
Oh.
So as long as we've opened item I, can we get a brief synopsis of why we are doing this by resolution instead of?
It's always been that way, isn't it?
Was it always by resolution? I thought that it was.
Yeah, it's just that we didn't have, what?
Historically, we haven't been doing the resolutions, but the past year we have with the counsel of our city attorney.
Okay.
Okay, so, city attorney, can we approve item I now? With the, have the names?
Pardon me, I'm having difficulty with the mic. I would suggest that the clerk read the names to add the names into the resolution and then you can, if it's the pleasure of council to pass a motion, so amended, and then take a vote on that motion.
Okay. The clerk?
It is being recommended the following resolutions to insert the names of the following appointees to the final drafts of resolutions 2018-09 through 2018-21. Planning commissioners appointed is Douglas Gooding for a term through January 2020, Apollo Gomez-Somer for a term through January 2022, Sandeep Patel for a term through January 2022. Complete Street Safety Committee members appointed to terms through January 2022, James Christie, Linda Detmer, Ernie Ibarra, Anya Miller, and one possible additional appointee to be determined at the City Council Special Meeting of March 20th, 2018. Open Space and Ecology Committee members appointed to terms through January 2022, Meg Akenbrock, Michelle Salmon, Claire Tris, and two possible additional appointees to be determined at the City Council Special Meeting of March 20th, 2018.
Okay. So now we can entertain a motion for item I.
I'll make a motion to approve item I as amended by the city clerk.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks, we made it through that, okay, now the
Confusion.
Now the fun part. Oh, no, not yet. Oh, yeah, it is, the fun part, yeah. I'm skipping over it, the fun part, we get to swear yeah to all the folks that we just passed the resolution for. So if I could probably do them each segment, do the planning commissioners first and the complete streets and open space, that way it doesn't get too convoluted, okay? So could we have Doug Gooding and Apollo Gomez-Somer and Sandeep Patel come forward, please?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sandeep Patel.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies foreign and domestic
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of California.
that I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
And that I will well and faithfully discharge
the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We'll see after about six months if you are still happy. Okay, Complete Streets Safety Committee members appointed to terms through January 2022 is James Christie, Linda Detmer, Ernie Ibarra, and Anya Miller.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, James Christie.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
The Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies foreign and domestic
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
that I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
All right. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen, on that. So now we have three members for the Open Space and Ecology Committees appointed to terms through January 2022, Meg Akenbrock, Meg's here, Michelle Salmon, and Claire Tris.
Oh, you get it easy, Michelle.
Flying solo, okay.
Meg and Claire are going to try to make it on the April 5th. I state your name.
I, Michelle Salmon.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
The Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies foreign and domestic
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
that I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you everybody for volunteering for these commissions. You know, the council was certainly challenged, we had a lot of excellent candidates. I think more than anybody we've ever had, you know, especially on the planning commission since I've been on the council, and that's now 20-plus years. And so all the folks that applied and, you know, I know it's tough to sometimes not get appointed, you know, but for those who did get appointed, you know, we appreciate you stepping up to the plate and look forward to your service. So thank you very much. Okay. And you're welcome to leave if you want, if you want to stay, that's fine too, so, okay. That's going to bring us into a public hearing, which is introduce ordinance number 625, zoning text amendment RZ 1-18, to amend zoning text to eliminate the prohibition of cannabis businesses within 600 feet of a school or daycare for properties located within zoning districts where such uses are permitted. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Last September, the council adopted an ordinance regulating certain types of cannabis-related businesses and established certain performance standards and permitting processes at that time. One requirement was that new cannabis businesses prohibited within 600 feet of a school or daycare. It came to the council's attention later January of this year that that particular limitation was a significant constraint for opportunities to locate cannabis businesses within Crocker Park due to proximity issues and the tight rental market and lack of vacancy in Crocker Park. And at that point, the council directed staff to initiate a code amendment to eliminate that 600-foot code restriction or separation requirement, rather. And again, that was based primarily on the fact that any of the impacted schools or facilities are geographically separated with topography and they're not really within walking proximity. The other factor was that cannabis businesses are subject to a conditional use permit and therefore that could be taken into account for any given cannabis business if that were a concern. So on that basis, staff did proceed with an amendment that's before you tonight. It was considered by the planning commission in January of this year and recommended for approval. And we're therefore recommending approval or introduction of ordinance 625. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, council questions?
I do not.
No questions?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, I have one slip regarding this matter from Michelle Ditzier. I might have butchered your name, so if I did announce it correctly.
Common mishap, Ditzier. Hi, Honorable Counsel. I just wanted to recommend possibly also adding to, extend the delivery hours that are currently in the ordinance, because the current delivery hours are, I think, I believe until 7:00 PM and some people don't get home until that current hour and it could limit them receiving their medicine. Also, if we are delivering further than the current area, it could allow us to leave at hours that are not in traffic. So in other cities, they have allowed it till 10:00. The state subcommittee actually voted to extend it on a state level as well. So my, my request would be to add in the current recommendation to extend delivery hours to 10:00 PM. Thank you.
I hear staff's, maybe city attorney, you want to weigh in on this, or staff?
I'd certainly defer to the city attorney. This was never, this particular amendment was not put forward previously and it wasn't considered by the planning commission, so defer to the city attorney whether it could be considered at this time or not.
The council could give direction to staff to take the matter before the planning commission, but the matter would need to go through the process before the planning commission, before it came forward for consideration in front of this body.
Okay. Counsel's pleasure.
I would like to I'd like to approve the ordinance as it is and we can always come back and address the hours of operation as needed and go through the channels. I wouldn't want to postpone this ordinance to make that happen right now, so I would like to introduce ordinance number 625.
All right.
Can we give direction to staff to take, because this is already, we can have that particular aspect go to the planning commission, right? And they can evaluate that separately, because that's not really related to this.
Yes, the matter could go before the planning commission. The, an in-depth discussion can occur tonight on this issue, because it's not before you, but certainly you can give some direction to staff to bring it forward to the planning commission and then whatever the planning commission recommends can come forward to you.
Right. Thank you.
I have a, sorry, I have one more question. So I know that this needs a second reading, right?
That's correct.
So does a second reading have to happen at a regular meeting? Or typically those go pretty quickly? Is there precedent to do a second reading, like during a Baylands meeting? And kind of combine those? I just know that, that there are businesses that would like to operate as soon as possible and this is, once this is passed and it doesn't go into effect for another 30 days after that, so waiting until April 5th may, may put them at a disadvantage for getting other licenses. So is that possible to have, push that second reading up a little bit?
Under state law, an ordinance may only be adopted unless it's an urgency ordinance, which this is not. An ordinance may only be adopted at a regular meeting of the council. And I will defer to the city manager in terms of scheduling, but I believe I understand that you have three weeks until your next regular meeting. And so unless your regular meeting schedule is amended or changed, it would be three weeks. And then yes, there is a 30-day waiting period before the ordinance can take effect
Okay.
after the second reading.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, so Terry, you made a motion and
I did make a motion to introduce ordinance 625.
And Madison, you're requesting that this go back to the planning commission?
No, 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 I'm happy to approve this part. I think that the delivery hours, I'd like for that to be evaluated by the planning commission, but I think that that would be its own amendment, right? So I'm fine with this.
Requesting staff, that's what the request is, and council?
I agree with Madison on that, sending that part of it to the planning commission for consideration.
And approving this part now.
Yeah, so I think everybody's in consensus, so is that
Yeah, you know, I do have a question now for staff.
Yeah, go ahead.
Clerk, you know, as far as timing goes, is that the, is that the most efficient route? To approve this tonight and then have the hours be put on the agenda for the planning commission? Or is it better for us to give direction to staff and then you put it on to the agenda for the planning commission that comes back to us?
I would have to understand what you mean by most efficient, if
If, it's the timing, I guess.
If what you want to do is have the buffer lifted as quickly as possible, then moving forward with this tonight, introducing this ordinance before you tonight and then coming back at your next regular meeting for the second reading, which is the adoption of the ordinance, which would then require a 30-day waiting period, would put the change to the zoning ordinance that pertains to the buffer on as quickly as possible. You would then separate out the question of the delivery hours and that would then go forward through the planning commission. That's going to require some time, because it would need to be prepared by staff, it would need to go forward to the planning commission. Planning commission would need to make a recommendation. Then that would come forward to you again for a possible introduction as an ordinance and require two readings. So you would have two separate processes, but you're, you are toward the tail end of the first process on the buffer zone. And if the goal is to get the buffer zone change implemented as soon as possible, this is, this is the fastest route.
Okay, and then because of the nature of this, I guess the structure of this type of ordinance, the council doesn't have the flexibility to make a change without having to go back before the planning commission?
This is, it's really a very different regulation that you're looking at. Yes, it pertains to cannabis, but it's a very different regulation. This isn't just a nuance on what the planning commission did look at. This is an entirely separate regulation of the cannabis industry. And so it would need to go back to the planning commission. It could be that that process could go through the planning commission quite quickly or not, and I would defer to your planning director.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Another council question, all right, so we have a motion by Terry.
I'll second it.
Second by Karen. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, okay.
So I would like to make a comment on this. When, when we look at possibly bringing back delivery hours, I think we should also look at special business tax that other communities are doing and other things that relate to it and do it holistically, rather than
Every time.
doing one little piece at a time. I think this is a good start, but I do think it's, it's an ordinance that's going to be evolving with things and how they change and, and what makes sense for the city. So rather than, you know, make direction to come back on, specifically on delivery, I'd like to take a look at the whole ordinance and see what we want to bring back to planning commission so that we can sort of get it done instead of trying to piecemeal it every couple of months.
Just so that I'm clear on that, you want that conversation to come back to the council first?
I would think so.
I would think so, to see what we want to do. I think that that's, that's a good thing, rather than say we want to just look at delivery hours, because there might be other things that we need to look at in this ordinance. We were, it was a reactive ordinance when it first came in, so.
Sure, so do you want to hold on to delivery hours until we bring that more holistic approach back? Or do you want to start the delivery hours now?
I think that'd be the, probably not for this discussion, but I think that there's, we never did really talk about business license fees and things, because we, we thought we weren't really going to be that open to it, so.
Well, if I'm hearing you correctly, that instead of just coming back and looking at Well, if I'm hearing you correctly, that instead of just coming back and looking at business hours only, that you look at other things too, right?
Yes, yes, I would like to do that, but I think that that's going to need a little more time to flesh out.
Well, not entirely, maybe I'm just being dense here, but you have somebody that's before you from the public who's asking you to move forward on the hours issue. And we can do that and bring that to the planning commission, and then come back to the council with a more holistic review of the, of the ordinance and the finance, or the financial issues.
Well, would.
You're going to hold up the hours issue if we wait?
Okay, um, I think it's fine that the staff works on the hours issue, goes ahead and works on the hours issue.
Okay.
But, and I don't know if the regulation or the business fees or the taxes would need to be done by the same kind of resolution process. It probably would not need to go to planning if it's a financial issue. So, maybe that's something we can look at simultaneously, and, but.
Okay.
So, sure, the portion that needs to go to the planning, I think can, that process should start.
Okay.
But I also would like to find a place to discuss the financial portion of it, too.
Okay, rest of the council okay with that? Anybody? Silence, silence is golden, huh? Okay, all right. Have your direction, okay. So, that's going to bring us to new business, which is item A, consider approval of releasing a new library project for bids and approval of a task order with JMW Consulting Engineers for Construction Management Services. Randy?
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, good evening. This has been a long planning and design process, but we're now actually seeing a light at the end of the tunnel, and that light is shining brightly on our new Brisbane library, so we're very happy to be able to bring this to you tonight. Traditionally, when we bring you projects looking for approval to publish, notice inviting bids, we bring you the plans and specs. In this case, the plans exceeded 160 sheets in length, and the project manual was over 1,000 pages in length. So, rather than imagining that you all have the bandwidth and capacity in your spare time to go through that, the first thing we did was schedule a meeting with the infrastructure subcommittee. We had the architect give that committee a briefing on it. And this evening, we're going to do a very similar 10-minute presentation for you, so that you have a pretty decent understanding of what you're going to get when this project is finally built. And at the end of that presentation, I'm going to give the same budget update in public that I provided privately to the council. There was a bust on what the actual construction estimate is, so I'll, I'll give that to you. And then, without further delay, I'll introduce Karen Richards, a young lady seated in the front row to your immediate right. Karen is the project lead on the SNS library. Yes, you can still be young, even with two children, Karen, it's perfectly fine. And she's been a pleasure to work with. I think we've got really solid plans and specs, and I'll let her give you her presentation.
Think you just rip it off.
We're going to get this on our screens here?
Yep.
Oh, there it is. Hey, that's Brisbane.
Ask and you shall receive.
Okay. All right, council members and staff and residents, good evening, and thank you for allowing us this opportunity to present the new Brisbane library as it's permitted and ready to go out for bid. When we started this process two years ago now, we interviewed, and we heard a lot about what the community wanted. And one of the primary ideas was this idea that it fits in, that it fits in with the intimate streetscape that you have along visitation. You know, simple, modest buildings, the softened edges of the mature trees, and of course, San Bruno mountain rising above. But we also heard that it needed to stand out. It's a civic and community building, so, so it needs to do both, is what we heard. And so that sort of idea is where we came up with this design. A building that pulls back from the street edge at visitation. It creates a sort of community space right there on the street, a front porch of sorts for the community to gather at. And it allows that the, the concept of the landscape, the trees and planting, can kind of come through that entry hall, through the big glass and high roof, to a central courtyard beyond. And this building really will fit with the scale and texture of the street. So, here it is with sort of that same height and rhythm and cadence along the street, but with a few design moves that set it apart. The high roof at the entry, the tree columns, and the bay windows there. On Monterey, we did a similar sort of pullback from the street edge, but for somewhat different reasons here. Here we have adjoining a residential neighborhood. And so there are the setbacks, to align with the setbacks of the house adjacent, and to provide a patio for the community room. And in the central courtyard is really a room for the library. It's an outdoor room. And so the big doors that open up and allow the indoor-outdoor connection, and a small fence that allows for the kids to go in and out of the children's room and not get too far afield. And so when this process started, we had sort of initial concepts of flexibility and a place for everyone. So, I want to take you through a typical day with these ideas in mind. First, to arrive at the library, often before it's even open, are the parents and their young children for storytime. They will gather either in the children's room, which is up here. If the weather's nice, they might gather outside on the, in the children's garden. But depending on the size and the other events going on in the library, they might also regularly meet in the, in the community space, where it's shown here with a large rug pulled out for circling around and ample stroller parking. The patrons, adults mostly, who might be also in here at the time, can have the option of sitting in the marketplace, which is up above here in the reading area, or can move to the quiet reading room, where there's a glass door that can be shut and to really isolate. During the day, normally from 10:00 to 2:00, or 11:00 to 2:00, it'll actually be mostly adults in the library. They'll be working, reading, meeting with other community members. And so they will, you know, again, often be either out in the reading room, the quiet reading room, or out in the courtyard. If there are programs that the, a library is offering, there might be a finance class or a book club. It can happen in the community room. But if there aren't programs offered at that time and library staff to monitor it, then there's the option of actually keeping that community room space closed. After 2:00 is when the middle school kids will arrive on a typical day. So, they'll often come in through the front entry, park their bikes out at the street, and head straight into the central courtyard for snacks. From there, then they'll distribute either to the community and maker spaces, which can have the library programming. There's a operable partition that divides that space in two, so the library can offer concurrent programs. And then, you know, kids will otherwise migrate into the main marketplace teen area to do homework, meet with others. At the end of the day, they will gather in those bay windows, if the weather's inclement, or out on the front sort of patio seating area to wait for a pickup. In the evening, or on weekends, when the library's closed, we actually have a operable partition that can lock down that library and allow for community events to happen in the community room. That might be an art exhibit or a lecture series, and you still have access to the restrooms and the courtyard. And finally, when the library's closed, community rooms closed, there won't be physical access to the courtyard either. But you'll still always have a visual access and connection. We have the large glazed, sort of central glazing areas of the entry hall and the community room, so you can really see through the building. So, next, one of the other sort of initial concepts was about building sustainably, and the target of doing a LEED silver equivalent building. So, I'm going to walk you through a little more of the detail of that. At the site level, whoo, washes out a bit. We have planting areas that are up here and permeable pavers that allow for infiltration of stormwater into the soil. We've identified and created flow-through planters that will capture a portion of the roof rainwater and slow and cleanse that before it goes into the city system. And then the bulk of our roof is going to be collected and captured in a rainwater cistern up in the corner of the site here. It's a 5,000-gallon cistern that's 10 feet in diameter. It's partially submerged underground, so it's only six feet above the courtyard level, so about the same height as the fences around it. So, it's not a tall and looming thing. And then, any other stormwater that's captured or collected on site, which constitutes the rainwater hitting the community room, will just go directly into the city system. In terms of water efficiency, we have native planting, low, low-water-use native planting, drip irrigation, and high-efficiency controllers, which will reduce our potable water for landscape by about 63% over the baseline for LEED. The low-flow toilet fixtures and sinks, combined with the rainwater cistern, will reduce our potable water for the, for the rest of the building by 63% over the LEED baseline. And when it comes to energy efficiency, we as architects always start with designing passively, reduce our loads at the onset of the project. So, we have a well-insulated building envelope. We use skylights and high glazing for natural daylight. We have trees and roof overhangs in those bay windows sort of twisted off of west to reduce solar heat gain. And then, of course, there's always natural ventilation that we're looking for, and then the high, high-efficiency lighting and mechanical systems. And then we have areas designated for future photovoltaic panels, the areas in yellow here. And those represent about a quarter of the roof in the best locations for solar access, and that will, once installed, reduce, offset about 60% of the building's electrical load, which if that happens, will essentially increase the project to being a LEED gold equivalent project. So, that, there's a lot of LEED points tied up in those panels. So, that concludes my presentation, and we're excited to get this out to bid, and construction started this summer, and that would target occupancy of this before the fall 2019 school year. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
My counsel or the other?
Yeah, I have a question. So, this might have been explained previously, but I'm just not recalling. So, could you tell me why there have been parking spaces that have been taken out and in landscaping have been inserted instead?
So, out on visitation, the street, the slope of the street is too great to meet accessibility requirements for cross-slope on a parking space. You're only allowed 2% on the slope, and the street is 7%. So, when, in the design, looking at, we have a city building that has no adjacent parking or way for an accessible, a handicap-accessible person to get to the building. The idea was to add a parking space that could meet that. In doing so, for us to level out a parking space to meet the code requirement of 2%, we ended up having to add in some landscape, sort of parklets essentially, that have curb heights that address that grade change that has to happen. So, instead of having abrupt shifts in the street slope. And then also the required parking space plus access aisle. The access aisle was already taking up one space from that as well. So, we essentially are losing one parking space between that.
Okay. And this is just, just a comment. I, I think it would be addressed in public art, but I'd like to see maybe us think about doing something creative with that rainwater collection tank. It's just the picture that you showed. I don't know if it'll look like that, but it just looks so ugly to me.
Yeah, that was one of my questions.
So, I'm hoping maybe somehow we can address that and either find a way to paint it, or just do something a little bit more interesting, so that just kind of maybe fits in with that children's space a little bit better, and just kind of a big receptacle. So, that's something that maybe we want to think of putting on our, our list of areas that we'd like to address in the near future with some of this new money coming in for the public arts.
So, ma'am, that was actually intended to be a blank palette for children to be able to do exactly that on?
Like for them to, to use chalk or?
Chalk.
Yep. Yes, exactly.
Who might just want to discuss it anyway?
I just wanted to assure you, we were.
Lot of ground for chalk, too.
It is.
So, chalk washes away. So, anyway, that's, those are all my comments. So, thank you so much for your hard work, and I can't wait to see this come alive, so it's very exciting.
Great. Any other council questions?
I don't have any questions right now.
Yeah, I do, thanks, Clark. Yeah, thank you for the presentation. That was great. And, you know, as you're rattling off all these great sustainability elements, yeah, I was thinking, geez, really, you're only getting silver? So, it sounds like with the, the solar panels, there's a good chance you'll get up to gold. So, that's good. So, you know, some of the, the siding is, is natural wood. But sometimes wood, if it's not treated, well, yeah, I guess if there's, there might be some species where maybe it stays that nice brown color, but usually it turns gray.
Correct.
So, would those panels eventually turn gray after exposure?
Right now, the plan is, is we're having it finished and coated, sealed. And the seal that we have on it, if they're doing two coats of it, depending on its exposure, you know, the more protected sides would last longer. But it would, if we, if the city wants to maintain the warm wood color and not have it silver, there will be, need to be a regular sort of refinishing of that wood siding. So, likely the eaves, the undersides of the eaves where we have the wood, that one, those areas, you might not have to refinish until like four or five years. Whereas certain walls, like the south wall of the children's room, that one, you might be looking at refinishing and resealing it every one to two years, depending on, on how that weather exposure is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is it?
That's it?
Terry, any question?
No, no, not right now.
Okay, it's not a public hearing, but is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this? Come forward, Michelle.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I know it may sound archaic, but how many volumes will this library be able to hold? And how many does the current location hold?
I think Randy can answer that question, right?
I, I think not, sir, but it's really, it's really great.
Randy likes reading, but I don't know.
Yeah, why don't we put? I thought I'd put you on the spot.
Thank you. Francisco, come up and introduce yourself, please, buddy. They know you are.
Hi, good, good night, council, Francisco Vargas, branch manager. So, the, we did the count on the shelves, and we would double the quantity of books that we could have in, in the new library from the old library. And I think we have shy of probably 100,000 volumes right now. It fluctuates. Yeah, they, our collections float, so in a given time, what that means if I, if you take a book from Brisbane and return it to Belmont, it stays at Belmont, or if you take a Belmont book and return it to Brisbane, it stays in Brisbane. So, at any given time, some things go up. So, we have a lot of people who love to read new books, so we got an influx of new books. And then, you know, our shelves fill up, so we send those back. So, it may not seem like we have that many books, but we actually do have a lot of books already, as it is.
I'm sorry, I, I find it hard to believe we have 100,000 volumes in that library. Our previous library housed 13,000 volumes, I mean 13, yeah, 13,000. And it was, actually seemed to house more than what we house now, so 100,000 seems way high. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on a matter? Not seeing any takers. Okay, council's pleasure.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the project, direct staff to file the notice of determination for the mitigated negative declaration, and to publish the notice inviting bids, and also to approve a task order with JMW Consulting Engineers in the amount of $487,822 for construction management services.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So the information that our Public Works Director was going to give us is in the next item with the budget.
I can give it after you make the motion or before we make the motion, whichever. I will give it.
But it's really in the item B where we're...
No.
Sort of changing the budget?
No, it's not, ma'am.
So I think we should get that portion of the staff report before we make that motion.
Well, we got a motion on the floor, but go ahead.
Happy to do it now. So, for the record, I need to correct that the correct construction estimate is not what was written in staff report. It should be 6.5 million, and as I explained to the council in the email on Tuesday, that does not affect the project budget. That is exactly within the budget that we established circa 2016. So what has happened, as we go along, the construction, the estimates, as they get more refined, tend to go up, but the contingencies that we established early on, two years ago, tend to go down because the project is more well-known. But we are, we are point-on within the budget that was established in 2016. So it's no, having the mistaken number in the staff report doesn't change the budgeting with fund needs for the project in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. Can I answer the question, Terry?
It does answer my question, but we just have less of a contingency fund, so if there is another extra cost that goes into, when it comes back from bid, then it will affect our budget.
That's not exactly correct, because I was hoping you weren't going to ask that because it's a little complicated. When we established our budget, the city established our budget in 2016, we had a contingency in there, and we carry that forward as we're looking at it, but as the estimator that's working for the architect does it, he also carries a contingency. So there is, as noted in the staff report, there is a contingency in the construction estimate, and then there's a contingency in the planning that the city did for its projecting budgeting, so we're still at about a $600,000 contingency.
Okay. Let's hope the bids come back good.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, we don't want it to be like the PRV, huh?
No.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, that takes us to item B, which is consider approval of agreement between the City of Brisbane and the County of San Mateo for $1.7 million loan at an interest rate of 1.2% for 15 years for the construction of the new Brisbane Library project. Staff report, please.
As Randy had pointed out, that the overall anticipated cost for the project is still at $9,65,000. As Randy pointed out, that the contingency we had back in 2016 was for $700,000, and we also had $400,000 for the outdoor space and site improvement, and we had $5.5 million for the building itself. So the new proposal, the new bid that you just approved included both the outdoor space and site improvement, as well as the building, and what that does is take the overall contingency for the project down to 100,000, but as Randy also said, that there is money in the architect's estimate for the, for the building itself. But we still anticipate the full cost of the project would be $9,65,000. The anticipated source for financing it is, there was 1.7, a little bit over 1 million, 1.7 million dollars from the new facility, new home facility fees. There was 1.2 million dollars from facility fees in the Northeast Ridge Prior that was dedicated to a different project, but was available for this project. The county loan would be 1.7 million. The city would have 3.6 million dollars for funding. The library JPA contribution is $400,000, which goes towards furnitures and furnishings for the project. There was 300,000 from Measure A for the design, and we anticipate $100,000 in donations. What you have before you tonight is the loan from the county for 1.7 million dollars. It's a 1.2% loan for 15 years, much better than we can get out on the open market, so we're very grateful for the county to offer us such a low-interest loan. The city, the agreement calls for using property tax revenue to pay the loan. However, what the city will do is backfill the general fund with money from the Capital Projects Fund. The city, a number of years ago, passed a business license tax that goes into the Capital Projects Fund. We, at this point, get about $300,000 a year from that business license tax. A portion of that is dedicated to repaying the general fund for the property, and another portion would be used to repay the general fund for the loan to the county. And then, if the city decides to pay cash for the 3.6 million dollars that we need to come up with, the Capital Projects Fund would also repay that to the general fund as it becomes available. As I stated in my staff report, assuming no increase in that $300,000, we will completely pay ourselves back in the year 2052. However, that's assuming that there are no new businesses that come into the city that are over $10 million. We, you know, there is a number of projects that are being contemplated right now on Sierra Point, that we anticipate will have larger businesses in there. We also have some vacant properties that are also coming in with new proj, new businesses that will probably be over the 10 million. So the 300,000, at this point in time, seems as if it is a conservative number, but as you know, I don't like to count money before we see it. So I just want to give you, the worst-case scenario is that we'll be using the capital projects money through the year 2052, if we don't get any growth in our businesses. If we get growth in businesses, it would be sooner.
Okay.
I have a question for staff.
Yeah, go ahead.
When you say that we're using the business license fee that's designated for capital improvements or capital projects, how much of the business license fee is dedicated to that use?
So we get about $400,000, 300, about 300 to 400,000 dollars in general fund business license tax, and about $300,000 in capital projects business license tax.
So about 50% of our business license goes to this fund?
Yes.
And so that's tying up our business license fee, in theory, through 2052, that, for the capital projects, for this project?
Right. And the money was approved by the voters for capital projects, specifically.
Any other counsel questions?
No.
You know, I just wanted to comment. I appreciate, you know, the hard work you put into this, Stuart, and coming up with this formula. I mean, it's very balanced, as well as being creative, but conservative. I mean, it's, it's, yeah, I mean, you really, you know, showed a very prudent and smart financial pathway for the City of Brisbane to put forth this effort to build a new library in our town, so thank you very much for that.
Any questions from the public regarding this? Okay, council's pleasure.
I'd make a motion to approve, no, I just turned my page, the agreement between the City of Brisbane and the County of San Mateo for $1.7 million loan at an interest rate of 1.2% for 15 years for the construction of the new Brisbane Library project.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in two seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, staff, for this, and folks in the library, folks, Anne-Marie, it's good to see you and your staff here, so you're smiling, and that's good.
Yeah.
Okay, brings us to item C of new business, which is mid-year budget update, which is item one, which is consider adoption of resolution number 2018-8, amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2017-18, and making appropriations for the amounts budgeted. Staff report, please.
Yes. So you adopted the 2017-2018 budget on June 30th, 2015, so in that given period of time, as you can imagine, a number of things have changed. The budget projected general fund revenues of 16.7 million and a projected expenditures of 18.2 million. There was an anticipated use of fund balance at that time of 1.5 million dollars, and we anticipated the beginning fund balance to be a little over 9 million, and we anticipated the ending fund balance to be about 7.7 million dollars. We did the 2016-2017 audit, so that year is done. We are just finishing that up now. Carolina's working extremely hard on that. But what we have found is that our actual fund balance for July of 2017 is much higher than we had anticipated. We ended last year much better than we had thought. So we have a, we are beginning this year with a fund balance of 11.3 million dollars, so much better than we had anticipated. As I said, it's about 2.2 million dollars more. However, for 2017-2018, there are a number of changes that we need to make in the budget. Our revenues are about $511,000 higher than projected, is what we're estimating at this point in time. I have listed out a number of items in the revenues that are higher than anticipated. Property taxes about $95,000 higher than we had estimated two years ago. Properties, as you know, are going up, and when they sell, we get that benefit. The, what we call ERAF, but the real term is Education Relief Augmentation Fund, is $99,000 higher than we, than was projected. ERAF is money that the city gets, the city pays to, within the county pool, to cover for school expen, for schools. Back in 19, I think it was 1991, the state, as part of their taking of city revenues, chose to take money and, from cities' property tax and put it into school districts. The rationale being is that the state claimed that they had reimbursed cities when Prop 13 happened. When I was in the state at that time, and the cities that had ERAF taken away from them said they never gave us that much money, but the state wins those kinds of battles. So they took money in ERAF. However, as you can imagine, San Mateo County's property taxes, revenues are high, and a lot of our schools are basic aid schools, so they don't need the money that's put into the ERAF fund, so that gets reimbursed to the cities. There are, or the underlying taxing districts, there are only three counties in the state that have this. Whenever we were talking, this is discussed at the county level, they always assume this is going to be a revenue source that may not continue, so over the years, I have budgeted less and less, and yet it has continued, so that's why we have $99,000 more than projected, and we'll have more than I would have thought for next year, too, so I'll have a better projection for next year. Long explanation on that one. Property tax from the vehicle license fees is $17,000 higher than projected. The property tax for this was when Arnold Schwarzenegger got rid of the VLF, that was actually a city revenue source, and what he did instead was backfill that with property tax. And from a city perspective, especially in San Mateo County, we see that as a positive. Property taxes grow much faster than the values of vehicles, so we've actually done better in that, and that's 17,000 higher than projected. We're $41,000 higher than projected in our RDA, in our former RDA, because our RDA, our former RDA has grown faster than we would have thought two years ago. Sales tax is the big one. Sales tax is a million, $32,000 higher than projected. Two years ago, I was thinking we were going to be close to 3.3 million dollars. We're actually at 4.3, so we have completely made up VWR leaving, so that has grown quite well. We have a number of businesses that we've talked about over the years that have come into town that have helped us, but you, as you would imagine, construction with Golden State lumber has really been very positive for us. Franchise fees are a little bit higher than projected two years ago at 39,000. The liquid storage fees are $100,000 higher than anticipated. When we did the budget two years ago, there was a lawsuit with Kinder Morgan. At this point in time, it seems that that lawsuit has been settled, so we would anticipate that we would be able to get the extra $100,000. Recreation classes are a little bit higher than projected. Miscellaneous revenues are much higher than projected. I always budget zero because they're miscellaneous, things that we don't anticipate, so as we get money back in. Majority of this is from PG&E for the Ice House Hill project, but we also have money coming back in for fire, for the fires in Marin and Sonoma, or Santa Rosa Counties? Sonoma and Marin, Sonoma and Napa Counties. Have to get the right fires. So this will be, probably be even higher than I'm projecting at this point, because we still have money due to us, but I only project miscellaneous revenues as we get it. There have been, some of these increases have been offset by some decreases. I had projected about $400,000 in revenues and business licenses. It's really going to probably come in closer to 335,000. Recycling business license, I thought we were going to do an increase in 2017, 2018. City Council passed the increase for 2018, 2019, so that was 650,000 less than anticipated. And then, truck haul fees are about, I'm projecting about $595,000 less than projected. As you know, they are not hauling any dirt at this point in time. Hard to charge them for dirt they're not hauling. On the other side of it, with expenditures, we're about $708,000 above our budget. We hired a full-time analyst for open space and sustainability. It's cost us $20,000 more than we had projected, and this is partially offset from the, our full-time emergency services employee being filled with a part-time position. Bayland's public relations firm is about $50,000. Plan reviews are $180,000 higher than projected, but as stated, as stated above, and I missed it, is our building permits and plan check revenue fee, or revenues are higher, but it gets offset by the expenditures that we have to make to CSG to cover those costs, to do that work. Police patrol is about $200,000 higher. Overtime is $100,000 higher than we had projected. Some of that will be offset with reimbursements from Sonoma and Napa County Fire, but there's also been more training as we brought on the code enforcement officer. That was training that we had not anticipated two years ago, because we switched it from being in the planning department to being in the police department, so there's additional training that we needed to do. There is also some training for officers that we need to do as the new ones came on board. Health insurance for the police department is $50,000 higher than projected. This is due to the contracts that we had negotiated. When I did the projections, I had used the estimate of what everybody is getting for health insurance, but as you know, when we settled the contracts, we held their, their health insurance constant, at a constant, because their health insurance that we were paying was higher than what we were paying for other employees, but that number is about $50,000 more than I had projected at the time. There is a life moves, which is part of the homeless solution, and that was $30,000, which we do get reimbursed for the city, and that will be part of our miscellaneous revenues. And as I said, there's travel and training that is higher. Not only is there overtime for the travel and training, but there's also the travel and training itself. Fire overtime is about $250,000 higher. A large portion of this is going to be reimbursed from wildfires. We've received $55,000 reimbursed to date, but we anticipate that we will get another $150,000 later this year in reimbursement, so that is not shown as part of the revenues yet, but we do need to budget for the higher overtime. We also have two employees who are out on workers' compensation at this point in time, so in order to fill the station, we need to have two people on overtime constantly, because we need to run with shifts of three, and that's what we current, that's what we have, so we don't have anybody extra on any of our shifts, so every time that somebody's out, we fill it with overtime. There will be some savings in the salaries line items, because the workers' compensation comes out of a different fund. That savings is not shown here, so we'll have some savings that we'll be able to see by the end of the year. And then, we also had $19,000 for a slurry seal project that got carried over from previous year, so that was already in the fund balance that we knew about. Parks and Recreation was $40,000 higher than anticipated. Good portion of this is $30,000 for the payment to the Sierra Point Owners Association and Sierra Point Environmental Management Association, and this is for the parcel that was returned to the city from Opus. We have to make those payments, and that was talked about at the time that we took that on. We also paid $6,000 more than anticipated for hanging and purchasing street banners that you see on visitation and, near the park, and then we had an unanticipated shower repair at the pool for $4,000. Also, our network support, and we've talked about how much more we're trying to do with our network for the city's computer system, was $20,000 higher than budgeted. So originally, the city anticipated having a fund balance at the end of 2017, 2018, $7.7 million, and we will now be at, anticipating a little... We will now be at, anticipating a little rate around nine million, eight hundred thousand. And as I said, I think that will be even better than anticipated, because there's a number of revenues that we still will see coming in that are not projected, and some expenditures that we will see lower that are not, that I'm projecting at a higher level. So, given all of that, that's where we anticipate ending up. Also, as I pointed out at the last mid-year budget, when you adopted the budget on June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, I did not put into the budget itself the hundred thousand dollar transfer to the OPEB unfunded liability fund, to the pension fund, unfunded liability fund, and then also two hundred and fifty thousand for the facility maintenance fund. I did not put that in, in the sixteen seventeen, I told you that in sixteen seventeen. It's also not in the seventeen eighteen, but it's included in all the numbers, but that needs to be put in here. And that sums up everything that we did. So as I said earlier, we anticipate a minimum of five hundred and eleven thousand dollars higher in revenues, and about seven hundred and eight thousand dollars higher in expenditures than anticipated. And the resolution captures all that and everything I said.
Okay, with that, council questions?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Terry.
In the fund balance that we're anticipating of eleven to, eleven point three million, and it states that, that it's not all cash, there's loan advances to other funds, what kind of money is in the loans and advances, so non-cash items?
It's about two million, two point three million dollars.
Okay. And is that the fund we will be loaning ourselves out of for the library project?
Part of it is that. So, I mean, as you know, that there's a partial, portion of that is the loan to the Capital Projects Fund for the purchase of the land. There is also, as reported on the investment reports, when we, when, when we do those, is that there is loans to, for individual, house loans that the city has done in the past. There's also an RDA loan that needs to be made up. So there's just a number of different loans like that.
Okay. And then, when you talked about incomes, and the truck haul fees that were six hundred thousand lower than projected, that business has been just recently shut down? So, that's from the prior year and the half year that it's been shut down, that it's six hundred thousand lower?
No, that is for, that is the anticipation for this fiscal year, from July first of this year through June thirtieth of, or July first of two thousand seventeen through June thirtieth of two thousand, June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. We anticipate having about five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars less than anticipated, because that, that was closed down in, in December.
Okay, so six months, we're anticipating six hundred thousand dollars less?
Just about. Yes.
So we were getting one point two million from them?
We're getting eight to nine hundred thousand a year.
Okay.
And, you know, when we, if we do better, then I'll be happy.
Okay. And on that same vein, and not really addressing it on this agenda, what do they still owe us?
I think about eight hundred thousand.
And are we making any progress on that?
Yes. We have a payment plan where they're paying, they're paying us every month.
And they're, they're meeting those requirements?
They are.
And what's the anticipation of being paid off with them?
We think that we should be paid off in four more months.
Great, thank you.
Madison, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Karen?
Nope.
Yeah, I just got a couple. So Stuart, in regards to the liquid storage fees, so, you know, because of lawsuit, you know, you had pulled back on, on receiving those revenues. So now that, it appears that we're on, on good terms with Kinder Morgan to move forward with receiving the money from those fees, so you'll, you'll build in those exact requirements into future budgeting?
Yes.
Analysis?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then, you know, we, we did talk about the building permits and plan check fees earlier today, and, and so we have all this, you know, all this construction that's going on out of Sierra Point and potential construction out there. You would think that we would receive additional fees from that, but, but you had said that the, the folks that actually do the, the checking?
The checking.
Yeah, they, they're the ones that are going to be taking most of that money.
You know, it's just a matter of how you do the, how you do the work. So the city contracts for plan checks and building inspections, because that way, we don't have to have our own staff, we don't have to have our own expertise. The agreements that we have with them, it's an eighty-twenty split, I believe.
Hmm, okay.
So the, as I, as I told you earlier, the, the large majority of the money goes to CSG, but if it didn't go to CSG, we would then need to be gearing up and laying people off as we went through wounds and busts in the cycle, and that becomes much harder.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. No, it's a, it's a smarter way to do it. So in your expenditures, as you went through the list, there seems to be quite a few, maybe one-time expenditures, or, or maybe in the near future, you want to anticipate them. So, you, how, how do you work all that into kind of analyzing future expenditures? Into your budget analysis?
So, we look towards the departments, when we do our budgets, to say, okay, what are the things, what are the items that you need to purchase over the next two years? And obviously, you, it's hard to always estimate everything that's going to break. So what you find is with, with public works, they usually have a general figure, they say, on average, we might need ten thousand dollars for broken irrigation supplies. Some years, it might be eight thousand that they spend, some years, it might be fifteen thousand that they spend. One of the things that, as a city, that we do not do, that some other cities do, is that if you don't spend your money, we don't penalize you in the future. And so what we find is that people don't buy things needlessly when you do that. If you were, you know, there are a lot of cities out there that will say that if you budgeted ten thousand and you spent eight thousand this year, then next year, we'll budget you for eight thousand. And what you find is, with those cities, is that it's amazing how much, how close they get to ten thousand every single year.
Hmm.
Because what they will do is, they'll say, well, next year, I might need twelve thousand, so let me stock up on supplies. I was in Reno, and we did not have a snowstorm, major snowstorm for four years, and we kept spending the same amount of money on sand every year, because they were concerned that if we don't buy it now, we won't be able to buy it when we need it. So, so we trust the departments for those. If something comes in, in unexpected, such as the shower needing repairs, we come back to council and let you know that that's happening. But, you know, in the next, next phase of this, when we talk about capital projects, I'll go through our reserve policy, and part of our reserve policy is that we anticipate, you know, there's five percent set aside in rev, for revenues that may not come in as anticipated, and five percent for expenditures that may be higher than anticipated.
Hmm.
So we do recognize that in any given year, my projections are not, are not going to be right. If I could tell you two years from now exactly what was going to happen, I would be in a different business.
Sure you would. You wouldn't be in the public sector, for sure.
I would not be in the public sector. Actually, I enjoy the public sector, I would just be in a different side of it, I think. But, the, so we do have money set aside in the reserves usually, you know, for this. But as I, you know, and that's part of what this will, you know, we do have money for reserves, you know, but we ended the years much better last year than we thought.
Hmm.
As I said, last year, we thought we were going to be running, using fund balance, and we in fact had a surplus last year. So, and I would anticipate that even the...
About six or seven years in a row that we've had?
I'm, I think, I think it's like five out of the last six.
Yeah.
I think we had one year where we were, where we did end up slightly below, below revenues, but we've been five out of the last six. And a lot of the reason, and Clay will keep pointing this out to me, a lot of the reason why that year we were below projections, like that was the year that we put a million dollars into the vehicle replacement fund, that was the year that we started, we put half a million into OPEB trust fund. So I consider that an expenditure. Other people might consider that just rearranging our reserves for future issues.
Hmm.
But it's, you know, comes out of the general fund, so that's, that was the year that we did run a deficit, but there was a reason for that.
Yeah. Well, you know, thank you for explaining that. I, you know, it's nice that, that type of culture of, you're all in it together, you're all part of the same team, not the little fiefdoms, you know, really is a, is a testament to efficient government.
But I, I think, I think a lot of that comes from the leadership from the city councils over the, over the years, where there has not been holding departments to say, okay, how, how could you not anticipate having the repair for the shower for four thousand dollars? Or how did you not anticipate, or why did you let the slurry seal project go from one year to the next year? I mean, I think having that ability to be able to tell council, here's the things that are changing, gives the departments the ability to say, yeah, if, if I don't need to spend the money this year, I know I can go to council next year when something important happens, and, and, you know, and council does what, you know, makes sure that the city's services are maintained at a high level.
Thank you.
Can I, can I piggyback on something, a question that Councilmember Lentz asked, and that was on the plan check fees, where fees were a hundred and ninety-one thousand more than we anticipated, and the, in revenues, and then the fees were a hundred and eighty thousand more than we anticipated? And at that eighty-twenty split, that doesn't quite work.
Right. So the challenge with plan checks and building permits is that we get them in one year, and we spend the money over multiple years.
Okay.
So that's always the challenge with that. So some of the money that we are doing, that is being spent today, is what we collected last year in building, in plan checks.
And...
So if you want, we could run more of an analysis as to...
No, no, that's, that's a good enough explanation for me, but I do have another follow-up on that, and that would be where the Baylands project is in, in the funding reimbursement.
I would need to look, but I think they're, they're all caught up, or almost all caught up, on the Baylands, on the Baylands.
Great.
I, yeah, I mean, I think, I think they're most, almost all the way caught up with the bills that we have, that we have sent them. I think we owe them a bill. But that's from us owing them, as opposed to them owing us. We haven't, we, we have to get our next bill out.
We haven't sent the bill yet, it doesn't mean we owe them money.
Right, no, we do not owe them money.
Okay, great.
No, no, we owe them a bill.
Owe them a bill.
We owe them a bill.
We owe them a billing.
Forty-nine cent postage.
An invoice, yes.
Madison, you...
I don't have any questions.
Oh, I thought, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Karen, any questions?
No, I'm just, thanks to Stuart for walking me through this prior to this meeting, so I had a much better understanding of what you guys have been doing for a couple of years. So thanks, Stuart. It wasn't French, it was English to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I know it's all numbers, and as much as I, I love numbers, I know it's not everybody's forte.
I love numbers.
Sure it is, everybody loves.
No, we'd be lost without you.
My, my wife will tell me every night, no, numbers are not my forte. Hers, not mine.
So they say opposites attract, right?
That's what they say.
Okay, this is not a public hearing, but any members of the public have any questions on this item? No takers, council's pleasure.
All right, make a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero eight to amend fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you, Stuart.
Welcome.
Okay, next item, item two, which is capital improvement plan review, which we kind of went over this in our bull setting.
You did, and this is again, a lot of numbers, and I had talked to Councilmember Lentz earlier today, and I'm, and I put together a overhead for this PowerPoint presentation, which might make it a little bit easier. As I talked about at the last, in the last one, for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, we had, we had budgeted about using one point five million dollars from reserves, and in fact, we're adding about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars to reserves. So we ended the, as I said earlier, we ended the year about one point eight million dollars higher than projected.
But that just means that we really did have a balanced budget, instead of balanced on reserves?
It's always balanced, it's a matter of whether we use money that we have in the bank to balance it, or...
Right, but...
Yes.
But, to me, a balanced budget is, is balanced on...
I, I understand.
Costs, instead of...
Reven, revenues exceeded expenditures last year.
Yes.
As opposed to revenues exceeding expenditures over two or three years.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's always good.
Play that reserves.
It's, it's why you save money, because certain years, you need it.
You know what, and actually, I, I gotta say this, because, you know, talking with all the other cities, with, with the exception of a few, we're in pretty good shape from that aspect, you know, that there's a lot of cities that really are running lean and don't have the reserves that we have in much larger cities. And just like, I think, both Stuart and Clay have told me in the past, the city of Reno used to what, one million dollars in reserves is what they had, something like that?
A good year.
On a good year.
I think the year before I got there, they were down to a hundred thousand, or something really low.
My gosh.
Yeah, and so, you know...
Then I got there, and it got much, a lot better.
Yeah.
Of course, the recession ended, and there was a growth cycle. I mean, I think that may have had something to do with it, too, but...
And they have casinos.
But the point is, is, you know, I mean, we, we actually do pretty well. And I know back in the nineties, we had set that policy where we would keep a minimum of fifty percent of general fund expenditures and reserves, since we've changed that policy, but, you know, we still do pretty well.
Right, and I'll go through that, actually, as I go through this presentation.
Oh, okay.
Because I think that's a very important point as you get to the capital projects.
Yeah.
So, and then, just as we talked about, this gives you the update that I just went through for our mid-year projections and where we're ending, and then the city council fund balance policy. So we have, and the city council, a number of years ago, looked at their fifty percent fund balance policy for expenditures, and asked the question, what, why would we use this money? What, why do we have money in reserve? A lot of city, one of the reasons, I think, a number of cities run lean on their reserves is because they don't really have a purpose for those reserves. So what happens when you don't have a purpose for money in the bank, you tend to spend it. I think, yeah, when you, you know, people do that in their personal life, cities do that, because there's always another need out there, both personally and with the city. I'm sure everybody can come up with lots of needs that the city could do. So what, we went to city council through their finance subcommittee at the time, and said, okay, what would be, what is the purpose for having reserves? And the three big reasons for having reserves is if you have large unanticipated expenditures due to some kind of phenomena that might happen in the world that you cannot anticipate, whatever that may be. And if we called it a earthquake reserve, or something like that, FEMA would say, oh, look, you don't, we don't need to give you money. So we just call it for unanticipated expenditures. We have three point five million dollars set aside for unanticipated expenditures. And as I've been saying over the last couple of years, we probably want to look at that, because a lot of those unanticipated expenditures would end up coming from the utility fund, not from the general fund. But at the same time, you might have some unanticipated expenditures, because if you lose a business because of a unanticipated phenomena, you won't have the revenue coming in for a couple of years. So you might want to have money for that as well. We also have money set aside for recession reserves. During the last recession, we lost about eight hundred thousand dollars, we were down about eight hundred thousand dollars in sales tax and property tax revenue. So this two point five million would give us money to weather that storm, and without having to make drastic cuts all at once, that we could figure out whether or not the recession is an ongoing issue or a temporary issue. We probably need to look at the, at the recession reserves going forward, or, because as I said, we've gone from a three million dollar sales tax to a four million dollar sales tax. So that should, we probably, going forward, need to increase our recession reserves a little bit, to cover that increase in sales tax. We also have five percent of revenues, annual revenues in reserve, and five percent for expenditures. So this would be as if something unanticipated happened during the year, such as one of the hotels closed a wing because they were doing a major remodel. So it, that's a one-time kind of revenue decrease, so you would have reserves to cover those kinds of one-time decreases. And then on the expenditure side, you know, as we've talked about, there's always something that you don't anticipate at the beginning of the, you know, especially two years ahead of time, so you would have five percent of your expenditures. the, you know, especially two years ahead of time. So you would have 5% of your expenditures. So this way, the city, there's definite reasons why we would use reserves. It comes up to, and it would, you know, in this case, we would have, we would have about 7.8 million dollars in reserves. And just to let you know, you are probably one of the few cities that have a defined policy like this as to why you use reserves. Most cities have policies that we want 12% of our revenue, our expenditures, or 20% of our expenditures, but never really defining how they will, why, why and when they would use it.
Probably only a city in the county that has a priority-based budget as well.
There, I think the county has one, or they try to. So, so one of the things that was talked about at the February 25th meeting was that if you have a actual surplus, revenues are above expenditures in a given year, that you would use that to decrease your unfunded OPEB liability, to decrease your unfunded pension liability, and then use it for capital projects. And what I had recommended at that meeting was 20% for your OPEB liability, 20% for your unfunded pension liability, and 20, and 60% for capital projects. So what you have here is that, is that split. And then in really small print.
Yep.
And I apologize, it was bigger on my screen when I did it, and I was closer to it at the time, is all the projects that we presented to you at the goal-setting session. All the projects add up to 2,266,000 in general fund money, and then the $400,000 for the dock flotation. But also at that meeting, there seemed to be certain projects that rose to the top of the list. They were the railway for stairway between Mono and Sierra Point, the South Hill Drive sidewalk extension, the dog park lighting, Quarry Road lighting, the modular addition at BES, the stairway between Tulari and Santa Clara, the Crocker Trail commuter connectivity upgrades, matching money. One of the items that was not in the staff report, but council member Lentz pointed out to me that it probably should have been, was the alley improvements between Alvarado to San Benito, and then also the 524 Sierra Point to 805 Humboldt pedestrian access. So all those projects together add up to 1,600,000. The surplus that we would use, I just said from the previous slide, would be 224,829, leaving 835,171 needing to come from fund balance. If you do all this, that would give you a fund balance of approximately 8.5, 8.6 million dollars. The city council ending fund balance policy for this year is right around 7.85, and you'd have excess of fund balance for this year of 737,000. As I pointed out in my staff report, in '21, '22, you would dip into, you would dip to about 6 million dollars in fund balance. However, that's anticipating, you know, that didn't, that doesn't take into account some of the changes that I'm sure will happen this year. And then if you, if you look at it, that's really, you know, if I was off 200,000 in revenue in any given year for my projections, or 200, and 200,000 in expenditures, we would be back up over a four-year period, another, you know, 7.6 to 8 million dollars for a very small change because it's over a longer period of time. So at this point in time, you know, if the city council wishes to do all these projects, staff is very comfortable that we, there is money in the fund balance that we can do all of these without really impacting our ability to provide ongoing services. However, I think if you approve everything and anticipated that it would all be done between now and June, Randy would kill me, because that, that is a lot of work. And I, you know, what Randy would tell you, I think, is that is a multi-year capital improvement plan because just trying to get, get the normal staff work that we need to get done as well as these additional projects would be difficult.
He's giving you the evil eye right now.
No, we, we talked in advance, sir. But, but there are, at least of the listed, there, there are two of those that we've identified would, would have to occur in, out in 1920. So, and that would be the stairway from Tulari to Santa Clara and the Bay Shore-San Bruno intersection. Both of those just require enough engineering that we're not going to be able to get them done in the first year.
I don't have the Bay Shore.
I'm sorry, which projects did you say were 1920?
On that list, you only have one.
On that list, I only have one. Okay, the, the stairway, Tulari to Santa Clara.
Tulari-Santa Clara, the 300,000 project.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the projects that the council talked about at the goal-setting session, but I did not really hear five council members say that that was something that they wanted to add to the list, which Randy had just pointed out, was the intersection improvements at Bay Shore and San Bruno, because there's a number of issues that were related with that, as you remember. The accidents that have happened there were not true, were not due just to the design, but also due to driver issues. So at that point, so at that meeting, you did not say, yes, that, that's an absolute thing that we want to get done. But what I did hear with, these were the ones that I heard from the city council, were the ones you absolutely wanted to try and get done as fast as possible.
So the Crocker, remind me, the Crocker Trail commuter connectivity, is that the sidewalk issue?
No, this is the 2 million dollar project that we got grant.
Okay.
Funding for.
Okay.
And 115,000 is our.
Portion that's, that's irreversible anyway at this point.
Can you, I'm sorry, are you done with the question?
Go ahead.
Can you walk me through, you know, I know that Cliff kind of just brought up the alley improvements, but it wasn't, it wasn't like, we didn't have paperwork on that. So can you just kind of go over that project again? What that, what?
I'll turn to the city engineer for that.
So I guess it's about mid-block on Alvarado. There is an existing easement we have, it's a greenhouse that's to the right of it. And you walk up there and it's a very, very rough, very unimproved trail. And when you get to the top of it at San Benito, it's probably about a three-foot-plus drop from the street where there's a fire hydrant down onto the trail. So this would be putting steps in there.
All the way down?
All the way.
Or just?
From San Benito to Alvarado.
Is that something that's like, you know, some of these are, like the, some of these are highly-used trails? Do, is that one one that is, gets a lot of use?
It showed very well when we did the pedestrian and bicycle master plan. So it was indicated as high-use.
It also connects to the. It also connects to the safe routes to school trail on Alvarado. So it, it provides an alternative for children instead of walking on San Benito, which does not have sidewalk through that blind curve to school. Now they can take the stairway to the safe route to school on Alvarado and get to.
And is, is it just, I, excuse me for not having been on that trail or remembering it. Is the base of the trail itself passable and, and the three-foot gap at the top the major problem? Could there be a temporary?
Could you just put stairs in that part?
Portion so not to do the whole trail for 200,000? Could that be engineered for just making that trail connective?
Well, we could do just about anything, ma'am. But I, I think, from having walked that trail personally, it, it's pretty rough the whole way through.
I know.
And I think I'd be a little concerned. I mean, I appreciate what you're trying to do is, is trying to, you know, expend money wisely, but I'd be a little concerned about creating a hazard where we fix one end of it as if we are inviting people to go down the trail.
This looks like a good trail. Oh, it's.
And they get halfway down and they fall, and so we've maybe created kind of an attractive nuisance, invited people onto something.
And those trails don't have to be ADA compliant.
Well, clearly, it's not right now.
But when we do them, you know, isn't there a certain amount of grade and things that we have to look at to, you know, insert in widths and?
So, so what we do with that, that's an interesting challenge in Brisbane here because we're, well, and it is. I was just having this conversation with, with folks about the library the other day, because imagine if you were on Visitation Avenue and we decided we were going to make the entrance to every building there ADA compliant. Well, you wouldn't have a civil business that would be able to do that because of the nature of the street. I mean, the road slopes at 7%.
Just locked it out of it.
At a greater slope than ADA compliance is. So where you have those physical, topographical, geographical constraints, you're allowed to deviate from ADA. So would this trail be ADA compliant? No, there's no way we could design it so that a wheelchair could go up and down it. That the slope is just too great and you wouldn't have the room to track back and forth like you would need to with a wheelchair to meet there. It would be the, it would make Lombard Street look sensical. Somebody who really knew what they were doing designed that.
I, I just know that when I've been talking to people in our county parks, there's things they can't do with the trail because they have to meet trail widths and trail accessibilities. And so they are reluctant to do anything because of the ADA requirements.
And, and they have a different challenge they deal with, ma'am, because what, what you're stuck with, for instance, on this trail, is you're, you're stuck with two fixed points in the world. You have two elevations. You got one in Alvarado and you got one in San Benito. And the only way you can change the slope between those fixed points is to change the distance between them. So what we do with ADA, sometimes when you have to, is you meander back and forth. So if you have the physical space within there to meander, you can do that. And unfortunately, my colleagues in the Parks Department end up getting that logic imposed on them because they don't have two fixed points in space. They have the start of a trail and they have where the trail would like to be, but they could physically dig it. They could, they could physically lower the slope. They could move it out beyond that. So they get very stuck with that. I, I don't see that we have that problem at this particular.
This has a five to seven-foot swath of a side setback to personal property.
Right.
And the pitch on that is just, you know, absolutely no way you could do it at 2% grade, but it is a, a public right of access right, right away.
Right.
Because I've been there for a long time. I remember when I was a kid, and Michelle, you may have done this too, especially in times when it's wet. You go down it, skate down it, you know, and see if you can get to the bottom without falling on your butt, you know? And.
All right, I used to run up and down that trail.
And I expect the kids still do that today, you know, that they go.
Nah, they might damage their iPhone.
Yeah.
Can you explain the, the, are you done with questions on that? Anyone have questions on that? That one still?
I don't.
Okay, I was gonna ask questions about another one.
Go ahead.
Okay. Can you go over the last project, the 524 Sierra Point to 805 Humboldt pedestrian access? And just kind of describe that project, I can't remember.
Sure, I don't, I, I apologize. One of the council members brought that up. We didn't have that on the list. Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. So that is on Sierra Point where it gets, where it's one of the curves with Sierra Point where it's mixed up with San Benito on either side of it. It's the, kind of the wide part of Sierra Point there. So if you're, if you come up, if you come up Visitation and it starts to become San Benito, then you turn left on San Benito, you get up to the top of the hill, right up there, some of those addresses are Sierra Point. So it's that, it's the newest house right there. To the right of that house, there is an existing concrete driveway, which is actually a public access easement. And then that, that access easement extends all the way up to Humboldt. It gets up that far. So there's some existing stairs there, which are nowhere near California Building Code compliance, and we've got to pull some of those out and replace them. And so this project would upgrade those stairs. It would provide a railing there, and it would provide lighting for the extent of the trail.
Oh, that was.
You know what he's talking about?
No, I don't.
You ever see that old Mercedes, like a 1930 Mercedes Benz, when you drive down Sierra Point and cut down San Benito and then go down San Benito towards BES? Kind of like going towards BES.
Yeah, I know going towards BES.
Yeah, and there's an old Mercedes.
Do we have a city map?
Oh, yeah.
Pull up?
Yeah.
I know the one. I just tried to pull it up.
That big, steep, concrete driveway.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know the one. Okay.
It, it's probably, what, 100, 150 feet from the top of the last project we were talking about?
Yeah, and, and it would, actually, you know, if we approved the alleyway improvement Alvarado to San Benito and this one, then, because they're just, yeah, then they would be connected. You know, when you come up off of, onto San Benito from the alleyway, you'd make just a quick right and then a quick left. And the, the driveway and then stairway is, is right there.
I brought that up because there were some residents up on Humboldt who had contacted me about a safety issue with the way it was right now. And I tried to walk down it, and it really is not good.
So for me personally, I, actually, I don't have any, I'll open it up to questions for somebody else because it's not discussion time, but.
Well, go ahead, Madison, if you've got more questions.
No, I don't have anymore. I was gonna make, like, I was gonna say what I think, but I, I won't want to finish questions from everyone else first.
Anybody else have?
Not, not for staff, I'm good.
Terry?
Not for staff.
Yeah.
Okay. And is anybody in the public, Michelle? I'll take you next, Greg.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I'm sorry I missed the first part of the discussion, but I was having a discussion outside. But I noticed when you flipped back to the other list of things that aren't on this list, there was the Brisbane Fishing Pier, $97,000. $97,500. And I've talked about the Brisbane Fishing Pier before, and the longer we let it go without any work done on it, the harder it's gonna be and the more expensive it's gonna be to even bring it back up to any kind of standards. And it really is just, you know, such a beautiful place to go out on the end of that pier and look out over the bay in Brisbane, and we watch the eclipse from out there. But it's, the deterioration of the rails along the pier is, is now starting to cause deterioration of the railings that hold up the top rails. And so at least if we could do something to arrest the further decay of the fishing pier, it would really help to preserve it to where, until you feel we have money to fix it. But it, I mean, it was such a beautiful gift from the state of California to us when, you know, in 1983, when they finished it. And then to not do any maintenance on it for this long period of time, it's just, it's just not right. And we're gonna lose that as an asset if we don't take care of it. It really is, I mean, I don't know how often you walk out there. I walk out there all the time. And it really is beautiful out on that pier, looking back towards Brisbane, looking out over the bay. It's a completely different view than, than when you're on the, on the, on the land, you know, looking at the, our, also, our beautiful Marina. But to neglect fixing it just is inviting it to further degrade. It's been, you know, 35 years. It's time to do something about it. Thank you.
Okay, Greg?
Just gonna ask Michelle a question.
Hello, there are a lot of great projects up there. Looking forward to seeing those done. But there's one that I don't see, and that is the hairpin turn improvements at Humboldt by the top of Glen Park. And that is a, a safety issue. And I would hope that safety issues would be prioritized really high. But if it's something that staff can't get to next year, I would hope that it would at least be on the list. Maybe you could put a little emoji of a tipped-over mail truck with a guy stuck under it, just so you don't forget. Thanks.
Randy, you wish to comment on either one of those, or? Let's put you on the spot there, but.
I think I've addressed the Humboldt-Glen Parkway one with the subcommittee on a couple of occasions and suggested that what we ought to do is try to get a planning grant on how that would be designed. And when we talked with the subcommittee, my recollection is that, because this is, we're having a lot of conversations about geometry tonight and how you change the slope of things when you have fixed points. And my recollection was that preliminary design for that would require the roadway, would require Humboldt to extend out into the canyon.
Right.
Right.
So that you could turn. And the, the subcommittee was sub-impressed with that at the time. And so we've never progressed it to design concept or anything else.
Clark and I serve on that subcommittee in the past and I'm sure in the future. And, and every roadway, when there is an incident where something goes wrong, comes to the forefront of people's attentions. I think we did discuss, rather than fixing the roadway because going into the canyon didn't seem like an option that we were willing to do or able to afford, because it would be a project that, you know, would be in the millions of dollars to do. And so we had discussed, I believe, on that one signage and caution and letting people know about the safety issues and the hairpin turn and the blind spots, but not being able to particularly do anything about it at this time in our, in our discussions on road safeties. And so. And so as, as an answer, yes, it has been a little emoji with an overturned mail truck, but in our minds. But it is something that is probably beyond the scope of, of certainly a midterm, mid-year budget capital project review.
Michelle?
I hate to say this, but one thing that would really help would be enforcement on speeding. I, I, I walked that recently and I stood there and had a conversation with somebody for about 20 minutes on that nice smooth flat part that's nice and wide and makes people encouraged to speed. And, and then I walked down Glen Parkway, cause there is no, you know, other way to walk really from there. And people really speed on Glen Parkway. They rev it up to go up the hill and make that turn. And people coming down the hill, they had a nice wide space, so they're going kind of fast into the turn. And so, you know, if we don't have enforcement and if we don't really monitor that and take it people for speeding there and lower the speed limit, I mean, shit's gonna happen. But it really is on the drivers to slow down and they're not, and the mail truck was probably avoiding somebody and, you know, went like that. I don't know what happened, but it is a dangerous place. And for a while, we tried having Glen Parkway only be one way. And that didn't work very well either. And so we really need to slow people down there and, and, and enforce this, a, a lower speed limit through there. I don't know how else to take care of that problem.
Yeah, I, I, I drive that, I drive that road every day.
You, so you know.
Yeah, I, I know, I know exactly what it is. And, and I know how to drive it, you know, and a lot of people don't. Uh, especially at the curve where you put the mirror. And the people who wanna traverse down need to really look at that mirror on what's coming up. And if you wanna keep going, swing wide. Don't swing short. And that, that's part of the problem that, uh, you know, it's, it's a very unconventional road. But believe it or not, it's actually been widened about 25 years ago from what it used to be. Yeah, yeah. Greg?
If it's infeasible to widen the road, could you just put some of those plastic fluorescent orange poles to force people to always go wide?
I don't, I don't know if Randy could probably look at that, but I'm not sure it'd be feasible cause there's driveways there that, you know, intersect in the middle of the road. So, you know, it'd be kinda, kinda difficult to do that though. Yeah, cause, uh, and one thing, uh, one of the worst things coming up there is, um, construction trucks, like con- concrete trucks or, uh, um-
Moving vans.
Lumber trucks, moving vans, you know, the double wides, you know, stuff like that. And, you know, it's just an interesting phenomena that we have in Brisbane. And it's, it's a, like I said, if you wanna spend millions of dollars to try and-
Engineer it.
Out and go into the canyon and do stuff like that. And to me, a lot of it is just people really understanding how to drive it, you know, cause almost like is what it is. And I hate to say that, but, you know, it is what it is and fence and, you know, and the postal truck that tipped over was a guy on his first day on the route and decided to not look at the mirror and cut it short. He didn't know it, he didn't understand it, didn't understand the vehicle he's in and, you know, it, uh, darn near cost him his life unfortunately, but you know.
And they aren't the safest vehicles either on their own.
Yeah. Let's, council's pleasure on this, on the, um, capital projects.
Did we, did we wanna get any comment on the fishing pier?
I know we brought it up at the last, during the workshop. Can we get that out of the marina fund or is that separate? The fishing pier?
Fishing pier.
The, the last time we talked about it out of the mar- you know, we had it originally out of the marina fund. And I think the city council said, no, that is much, that is not really directly related to the marina. It was more of a recreation. And that's why I moved it from the marina to the general fund. If you wanna, if we wanna make the connection back, that's fine. I think we paid for it originally when we built the marina.
When we built the marina, but, you know, when we were going to, um, budget items that really, because it's a pseudo-enterprise fund, we really wanted to make sure that the items that were in the marina fund were marina-related and not park and rec, which traditionally and historically, we had put our park and rec funds along with our marina funds. And so they were convoluted a little bit.
Very creative.
Creative, convoluted, however you wanna call it. Um, but we changed that, which was good. And I'm, I, I know we've done some arresting of the deterioration on that. And perhaps without rebuilding it, we can continue to, um, maintain it before and, and keep the deterioration at bay for the time being. And I don't know if that's possible within the budget and not putting it in capital improvements.
Flip it to the next slide again, Stewart, please. So if we added 97,500 on that, that would drop it down to 600?
Yes.
632,000, something like that?
Yes.
And we're going to be putting-
642,000?
300,000 into, i- i- with the council's pleasure, 300,000 into the 1920 budget. I'm still a little concerned about spending the 1.1 million and dropping the reserves because I'm a little sensitive on trying to spend too much when we have such big OPEB and, um, other liabilities that are there. So.
I feel the same way. I just kind of got from the staff report, like, we could do it, but, you know, you might wanna take a little bit of a closer look.
Well, I think Stewart said that he was confident that if we move forward with these projects, that the city would be in still very solid financial shape. Um, if anyone knows the city's budget, you know, it's gonna be Stewart.
It just says here, in the current year, the city would be able to meet its reserve requirements if the listed projects were funded. But there may be a need to look at reserves and expenditures on a long-term basis to keep within the fund balance policy parameters.
Yeah, sure.
To indicate, like, to me-
Caution.
Caution, yeah. Like, I, I don't know, I just feel that we might need to take a look at this list again.
Mr. Mayor? You know, there's another way of looking at this. If you feel all these projects are projects that need to get done at some point in time, they're not gonna get cheaper over time. So it's, I think, better that we go forward at this point in time and go ahead and fund them and get them done if indeed those are things that you see as priorities. If you think that things are not priorities, that's a different issue. But just putting them off to another day, I think is only gonna increase your costs in the long run.
Yeah, and also, um, you know, Randy has mentioned that not all of these are gonna be funded now. Right? We're not gonna start work on them now. I mean, some will take time and, and when those projects come online, then that's when the funding will be put to use. So, um, if there was some kind of issue that arose in the next couple of years, then the council could readdress those projects that had not moved forward yet and say, now maybe we better hold off on those. Uh, but these are, these are things that are our priorities. These are the things that we said are the most important capital improvements to fund. You know, I mean, sometimes, sometimes, you know, you look at a number, it can be, as it seems high, you know, there's that emotion that, that, that gets into the decision-making. So, but if you have the reserves and you have a very smart reserve strategy, then you can, y- you know, in, in a non-emotional manner, put forth spending that makes your city better while also maintaining fiscal responsibility. If Stewart didn't think that this was why suspend this money, he'd tell us. Right? But that, that's not coming from him. So I, I, you know, these are priorities that we have listed and we, we should fund them. Cause we have the money.
Well, I'll, I'll counter that just a little bit with, we're also borrowing money to do capital improvements. So it's not like we can just spend money on everything because we are borrowing to be able to fund the excess in the library. And we, we do wanna do things and they are, you know, and high priorities for us, but I-
But the li- the borrowing on the library is different. You know, in the last, um, item, you know, we went through how that's gonna be paid for, right? And so we have the, that money will come in and we, you know, we're looking at paying off the library with a, a long projection, just like when you buy a home, you can have a 30-year loan or a 15-year loan. With the loan from the lo- from the county, we're taking a 15-year, um, uh, loan to pay off our, what is it, 3 point something million dollars. We're, we're using the $300,000 from the business license fees. And then that will be paid off in, in 2052. If times get better and we decide, hey, you know, we, we wanna pay that off faster, we can do that. But, you know, we have a good strategy and we're gonna be putting forth the, an excellent project. All of these things here, when you really look at it, I mean, they, they are safety, you, you can find a safety-related element to them. And they just make our, our, our city better. And as Clay has mentioned, if we fund them now, they'll be cheaper for us than if we fund them later on. I mean, eventually later on down the line, we're gonna want to put money into these things. And just like, you know, Michelle had mentioned in regards to the fishing pier, the longer you wait, the, the longer, and you know, the more money you're gonna have to spend later on down the line. So, um, while we have the money and we have smart reserves, we should move forward with, uh, spending this money.
Well, if we're gonna go with that mentality, we might as well put the fishing pier on there too.
You know, again, that's up for council discussion. You know, if you added 90 something thousand dollars, that will lower the reserve amount. Stewart, you know, if we added that additional, uh, expenditure, is, is, does that put us in jeopardy? I mean, I don't think so, cause it's only $97,000 in the whole enchilada of, of spending and, but, um, what do you think?
Right, right. I mean, you know, you, you know, the challenge, of course, from the fin- from the finance perspective is everybody is right in, in this conversation. 90, $90,000 on any one project is not going to be the issue that's going to make the city go bankrupt. The idea that, you know, the more money you have in the bank, the better you are. I think everybody feels more comfortable with the more money you have in the bank. But things don't get cheaper. I, and that's the problem here. Every, you know, there is no right, single right answer. The question is, what does council, what is council's pleasure when it comes to wanting to get these things done?
I mean, I think things don't get cheaper, but like, they tend to stay proportionate to the overall. I mean, you know, there's inflation and our revenues increase. I mean, I think it's like, if you look at that one specific project, yeah, that might not, that's gonna get more expensive, but everything else around us also changes. So I think it's, you know, I don't think it becomes over time dramatically disproportionate to what our, our cost of living, so to speak, is as well. So, you know, if you looked at these projects 30 years ago, of course, they're gonna be cheaper. But in that, in money at that time, it might've still been a similar, a similar amount when you, comparatively. So, you know, there's also, you have to take that into consideration too.
So, so I have a question for Randy. Um, you know, you spend, you know, a significant amount of the city's money on projects around town.
Yes, sir, I do my very best.
Over the last five years, over the last 10 years, have you seen, uh, just a gradual increase in costs or have you seen a dramatic increase in costs from how it used to be over the last five, 10 years?
It's been a significant increase.
Absolutely, it has.
And what do you think that this, that, that factor, what do you, what do you think causes that?
When the economy gets better, what happens is there becomes less competition for projects. So I think overwhelmingly, a big piece of that is contractor profit.
Right, so if we-
And we, and I'm not saying it's, and I'm not saying it's unreasonable profit. It's not unreasonable profit.
The likelihood that will go into-
Right, they're finally at the point where they don't have to take a job just to keep the crews running.
Right.
And, and operating at near zero. So they're making 15 to 25%. And then you add into that the cost of materials, just flat out going up 3% every year without tariffs of being imposed upon them. And the multiplicative factor on that is significant.
Karen, I wanna hear from you.
Thanks. So, my thing is safety. And the most expensive product, um, projects here are the safety projects. And the most important safety projects are the most expensive. So if we even put off some of the less expensive projects that are somewhat safety-related, we're about $100,000. And the fishing, adding the fishing pier to the whole mix in its entirety, what I think might happen with a beautiful fishing pier is more traffic to the new restaurants that are gonna come down to the, um, Sierra Point. Maybe more membership at the yacht club. Just maybe more people in general spending money down there when there's places to spend it. And because it's gonna be a nicer place to go. I mean, last time I went out on the fishing pier, it was disgusting. It was really dirty and I didn't wanna be there. And it is a beautiful place to be, for sure. I'm of the opinion that we approve the whole thing because the things I would take off that list are not the big-ticket items. I mean, the big-ticket items, obviously, I'm gonna speak for Tulare Street because we've got a one-lane road in and out and in a fire, we can't get out. So we need a way out of that street. We used to have a way out at the end of the street. That's gone. Those walkways on Humboldt to Sierra Point and the alley improvements on Alvarado to San Benito. I mean, there are lawsuits waiting to happen and, you know, we don't want that either. So I, I would approve all of it. And I would add in the, to the mix over the next couple of years, the, the fishing pier and do whatever we need to do to make sure it doesn't degrade any further in the meantime.
I agree.
Okay, well, uh, let me, let me add my two cents in here then. Through the years, I'm just gonna say, I'm, take a little trip back in time, but, um, historically, and I'm talking the last 24 years, the council has taken on projects where we know it's gonna cost us money. Now, I'm calling, ongoing costs like the swimming pool. Okay, now, we had the money for the capital, but not the operations. Okay, and the swimming pool, we knew was gonna be a loser, but it was a community amenity. And yet we took it on knowingly and we've still done pretty well. I mean, in a sense, we, we've, we've had some issues. We had VWR leave, but we were able to backfill it with ecology, thanks to our negotiation from the city manager and our voters and everything like that. So we kind of find a way and still keep that money in reserves. We've, we've done that all along.
Yes.
Done that for 20-plus years and taken things on. I know probably we're closer to the next recession than we are further away from the last one. We don't do this now, in this next cycle, they're not gonna get done.
That's right.
And I say, add the, add the marina in there, add the, the, not-
Fishing pier.
The, uh-
The marina, the whole marina.
And, uh, the fishing pier improvements for the 97.5 and, and I'm good with that. And that would leave us $640,000 of projection of excess fund balance, right? About that.
All right. So, you know, I know that there's a couple of-
Uncomfortable with that.
Yeah, I know there's a couple of council members that maybe felt uncomfortable with approving the whole thing. But I, I know that there are some- But I, I know that there are some things here that you do want to approve. So I'm going to just ask this question to, to staff, could the council have two votes, one vote, you know, approving some of these things and then have another vote approving some items that maybe some council members don't feel like approving?
Oh, I think that's irrelevant.
Depends on how late you want to be here tonight.
I know, I'm just saying.
For me personally, what it boils down to.
Right now and just, you know, let's, let's uh.
Make it.
For me.
My, I'll make them.
Well, I would like to say this, for me personally, what it boils down to is like, you know, I'm uncomfortable with the two projects that were submitted on the day of our goal setting workshop be- because there was no write-up about it. And I haven't had time to, you know, all of these things have kind of, we've mulled over them for a couple of years, like, they have been, we have been talking about a modular for a long time, we've been talking about dog park lighting for a long time and um, the stairway between Tulare and Santa Clara. So for me, I, I have not walked recently between Alvarado and San Benito, I've not walked, you know, those, the part between Sierra Point and Humboldt to really have an informed opinion about whether I feel like, for me personally, that I feel that those projects warrant us spending that amount of money. So that's why I'm not saying that they're not good projects and I'm not saying that they're not safety issues, it's just difficult for me to to vote not having had, you know, a staff report or information on them and for them to come that day and really not receive anything about them since then, for me to contemplate. So that's kind of, and so I had come in, you know, we had looked at a different number with all of these added up that day that hadn't really included an estimate for those two projects. So for me, that's why I'm uncomfortable is just because I, I don't have the information. It's not saying that I'm not interested in funding those, but I also, you know, want to proceed with caution too. So all that kind of comes into a mix for me that just like has me kind of straddling here. So I just want to explain like where this hesitance is coming from.
Can I offer a, uh, maybe a pathway forward that might work for all of you is that if you want to go ahead and approve the list, absent those two items, we'll bring those back and when we look at the full budget in June, there's no way we're going to do those projects between now and June anyway. We got, the public works will get started on the rest of the list and then we can bring back that fuller explanation.
And I'd like to bring the fishing pier back as well because I'd like to just, you know, I, I had come into tonight before I, you know, had looked at the staff report, I'd come in kind of thinking we were going to go with the projects that we had discussed in detail, um, which were the ones that obviously weren't the ones that I stated. And so, you know, if we're considering adding the fishing pier as well, I'd like to reconsider that and have that information together so I can look at all of those projects at the same time.
And if I, if I may make a comment, um, several of these pop- projects, we've talked about being part of the safe route to schools and a safety issue, fire access, and, and so they are safety issues, but when you mentioned the safe route to school and part of our bike pad uh, master plan, um, and I'm not sure if all of these projects were on the master plan or not, I, I really don't know, um, but.
The, these, yeah, all the stairways are. They're on that plan.
Okay.
We actually try, also applied for a grant for the Alvarado to San Benito, but we were denied by uh, the VPAC committee.
Okay, and was that bike pad or the safe route to school? Because there's a separate funding for safe routes to school.
Yeah, th- th- this particular funding was not safe routes to school, it was a, a different fund or di- yeah, um, a different grant. Uh, it was extremely competitive, the likelihood of us getting money from that grant was very low. There could potentially be another opportunity through safe routes to school and we will apply for whatever other grant opportunities that come up. And so just because we approve it as something that we want to spend money on, that doesn't mean that we can't get a grant and, and then the city not have to pay that or pay maybe a portion of it, like a matching type.
One of my questions to staff is if we've already budgeted for project A B that is safe routes to school possibly eligible, does that make a difference on the grant application? That we've already funded it, now we're asking for participation, does that change anything when it comes to the grant opportunities?
Well, I, I mean, I think it would be a, it's an issue of timing. We would, if, if we really thought we were going to try to pursue a grant, I don't think we would move forward with a project until we go through the grant process. So um, while there may be a city council authorization to spend money on it, we wouldn't move forward with it until.
Cause I would like to look into that since that's sort of where our council is, is pushing for a couple of these projects that are newer to the list um, as safe route to school and, and safety issues. I would sort of like to hold off and look at that opportunity.
Well, the thing is that, you know, the, if we go back to the other page, uh, Stuart. Yeah, I mean, this, th- this list, this got everything on it. I mean, we already went through this list, we went through all those items. So we've already had a discussion about them, to say that they're new items, that's not true. We talked about it during the workshop and then we prioritized, prioritized the items. Um, the, the Alvarado to San Benito, I thought that was one of the priority items and it wasn't on the list and that's why I asked Stuart to put it back on there. Tonight, Michelle has mentioned the, the fishing pier, we did talk about it. And so she, you know, someone from the public is making a case for it. I think it's a very strong case in that it, we should put it on there. However, you know, I mean, Clay gave us a, a suggestion, let's, let's uh, move forward with the original list that you got in your packet and then add those other two items potentially later in June.
Okay, um, that's, that's not what Clay's suggestion was, uh.
I, that's what it sounded like to me.
No, what he is saying is remove a couple items, right? Okay, so let me uh.
I'd be happy if we removed a couple of the items.
Okay, to look at, ho- hold on, hold on, to look at, to look at, you, you want to remove a couple items, the big ticket items, then we'll look at it in our two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty budget.
In June when we.
Right.
When we work on that, we can look at it.
Budget, we'll look at that, what do you want to remove or have?
I'm committed to keeping those a priority, I just want more information about alley improvements, Alvarado to San Benito and see the Sierra Point to Humboldt pathway and I would like to go walk those as well.
They're, they're looking for more than just keeping them as a priority, they're looking for funding.
No, I know, but I, when we come back, I would like more information.
Well, okay, alright, let, let, let's, let's be specific here because I hear three votes to just loop past this along with.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion on that right now.
Uh, fishing pier improvements, but.
I mean, if you're going to go ahead and.
No, no, I'm saying that.
And pass it, put the fishing pier on there.
To where we could move forward. Are there things that you're not comfortable with? That we can say, okay, let's, let's set this aside, let's set this aside, let's set this aside and look at during our budget times.
Well, yeah, that's, those are the projects I identified.
So.
And the fishing pier.
Okay, so what do you, what is your?
I want to do that.
What, what is it?
The alley improvements.
The which one?
The alley improvements.
Okay.
And the, you know, the Sierra Point to Humboldt and the Alvarado to San Benito and the fishing pier.
Okay.
Can I add something here, Clark?
Yeah.
So, the alley improvements, if we remove them tentatively, we could then apply for grant money for safe routes to street perhaps?
I don't know what the timing on those grant applications are.
We're, we're going to remove it to the budget, but, but Terry has, you know, the, to, to ask for grant funds. But I, I don't know, that, I mean, that's something that staff has to get back to us.
That, that's all a timing question, because the problem is we don't know when those grant applications are going to come out and we don't know what the qualifying characteristics of projects are going to be.
Okay.
So, what I would say is that if we've got a project and before we get it built, a grant program comes out that it looks like that project is eligible for, we'd have a conversation with the city manager and the city council and say, would you like us to hold off on constructing this while we pursue a grant? Because unless they've watched this council meeting tonight, the recipients, those grants don't know that you fully funded it. But what it does do is it allows staff to put in a bigger match and matches are often a very important factor in determining which projects are awarded. So instead of putting in a typical ten to fifteen percent match, maybe we could put in a thirty-five to fifty percent match on a project. And now your project, if it's approved, if the grant is approved, it's half paid by an external agency. But that does add time, of course, to the delivery of the project.
Well, you said th- these are going to take a few years to complete anyway, right?
One, he said, was nineteen twenty, that was the Tulare, Santa Clara.
The alley projects would not be the ones that would take us time to deliver, the alley projects we could deliver in the upcoming FY.
Okay.
Is the modular addition inclusive of measure A funds?
So, as we were told, as we talked about it on the twenty, on February twenty-fifth, that the cost of that project could be anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand. So we, we anticipate getting a hundred thousand dollars from measure, whatever the nu- whatever the latest let- letter was.
Titled.
Right, so um, just to be on the conservative side, if it's going to cost two hundred and fifty thousand, leaving it as a hundred and fifty thousand coming out of the general fund, but if it, if it costs less than two hundred and fifty and we get the hundred thousand, then we would have some savings.
And we'll know this pretty quickly, right? Because we're trying to get moving on that, so then we.
We are, so right now.
Immediately add another, another project.
Ri- right, so right now, we are getting our proposals on Monday for the rental unit. And then after that, we will start working on that design for the, for the modular. Once we know what we're doing, this summer, we'll work on what we're going to do.
So by June, we should have that information.
I, I don't know if we're going to have, I don't know if we'll have proposals back on the design by June.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do what we can, I'll talk to Noreen about where, you know, where she is on that one.
Okay.
So, on our list with the amounts, it's capital project requested be part of mid-year review and those are things that you're looking for funding on. And I would be happier rather than doing this in March where we're doing really a review through January, correct?
Right, I mean, right now, we have it through, you know, our best guess is through January, but come June, I'm not going to have a much better guess where we're going to end up fiscal year seventeen, eighteen. What I will have is a better understanding of what the, what the needs are for eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty and estimate us, and an estimate where we think we'll end up in nineteen, twenty.
Okay, I would, I would be comfortable putting off the alley and the Sierra Point until we come back in our June budget meetings rather than doing it here, because I think they're really June, because nothing is going to be done in the three months that we're looking at. And I don't see where it's doing us any service tonight to push those forward when they're not going to be acted upon until at least June, when we're going to be in our new budget negotiations and seeing where, where our costs are going to be and where our expenses are going to be. For me.
Okay. So I'm hearing Madison wants to table the stairway between Santa, Tulare and Santa Clara.
No.
Fishing, no?
No.
No.
Just the last two.
The last two, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the alley improvements and basically the access that goes up from Alvarado to Humboldt. Two projects, okay. What about the fishing pier?
Yeah, I would like to reconsider that as well.
I'm sorry, what?
I'd like to reconsider that as well, uh, in June.
Consider it?
In June.
Okay.
Leave it off the list until June.
Okay, Terry, that's your, your.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay. Anything else, anything you guys want to leave off?
No, I was willing to fund them all, um, if uh, that's what makes uh, Councilmember O'Connell and Davis satisfied with moving forward with these ones and we have a, the ability to talk about funding them in June, I'm okay with that.
Okay, Karen?
I'm okay with that too.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
I will make that motion.
Yeah, since you confused it, you can make it.
And this is for, everything else is on the list except for the bottom.
On this short list.
Yes.
On the short.
Not anything that's printed, we don't have this in writing.
Yeah, we don't have.
I wish it was numbered.
On the, on the list.
We don't have this.
On the project list that is in front of us and up on the board here.
Correct.
With the exception of the fishing pier.
Yes.
Which isn't on here.
Yes.
Okay, so the items that we'll be looking at in June are the fishing pier improvements, alley improvements to Alvarado and San Benito and Sierra Point to Humboldt pedestrian access.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a motion for the other?
I will make that motion.
Second.
A motion, another two seconds? Any further discussion?
I think we've.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, very good, so um, God, staff reports.
I have one question, when we, that's, that's sort of related and sort of not to our budget discussions. When we come back in June, are we going to have a better idea of what um, OPEB and um, the PERS is going to be? Because I know there's been some discussion about those rates increasing dramatically. And so if, if when we come back in June, we can have a, a really thorough discussion of that, because I think that is the uh, elephant in the room that, that I'm very concerned about.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I, the part, finance departments across the state have given hours worth of, of presentations to their councils, I'll try and cut that down.
Oh, gee.
Fifteen minutes, the short version.
Okay, I'll see what I, I'll see who I can steal from.
Abbreviated version.
Alright. Staff reports, city managers report and upcoming activities.
Try to make this fairly short, um, a couple of items of interest, um, I've had a lot of inquiries on uh, Supervisor Dave Pines, um, meeting that he calls flood, drought and rising seas, um, just to let you know that we will be having two, perhaps three staff people attend that meeting and that's on March thirtieth. Supervisor Canapa is doing his District Five Together program uh, at Jefferson High School on March thirty-first and we will have a booth there, uh, that will uh, highlight our recreation facilities and programs and our current job openings. Reminder that next Thursday, March twenty-second will be our next Baylands uh, hearing. And uh, the next city council meeting is on, three weeks from tonight on April fifth.
Okay. Brings us mayor council matters, countywide assignments and subcommittee reports.
I had a lengthy meeting with um, Anne Marie and her staff uh, for the JPA library uh, this week, it was, was excellent, we went over a lot of things. I'm excited to be working with them and all the programs that we're going to be bringing. And hope I can do it justice. So that's the only thing I've done.
Okay.
I don't have any.
Terry?
Uh, I'm just refreshing my memory here.
When was our last regular meeting that we reported out, things like this?
I haven't, I haven't had any.
Oh, you know, I, I, I was at a CCAG meeting and um, there really wasn't a, a lot on the agenda, though we did appoint a new chair. So um, Mary Ann, oh geez.
Derwin.
Derwin from Portola Valley is the new chair and uh, Marie Chan from uh, Hillsborough is the vice chair.
She's pretty, she must be newer on CCAG, Marie?
Marie, I think, I don't know, I mean, I guess she's been there a couple of years.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you.
That is that.
Terry?
No, I, I only had our interview and application meetings.
Alright.
Same, I didn't have any.
Okay, and uh, I don't remember anything passed yesterday, so.
That's why you are the mayor.
Yeah, yeah, we're all good here. Okay, uh, but see, you guys did have something that you wanted to talk about, no?
Who are you pointing to?
Yeah, yeah, you, you're pointing two fingers in that direction. Yeah, you're pointing two fingers in that direction.
You guys.
No, I'm pointing to Madison and Cliff, no?
No.
No, okay. All right, we're good. So city council meeting schedule.
No changes from the last time we shared this with you, two weeks ago. Would kind of want to bring up the August schedule. I know we had some discussion last time, but I don't know that we made any decisions about any one or both of those meetings we wanted to cancel.
I just wanted to get clarification if we were going to cancel, because if we are, I want to take advantage of it. So I just wanted clarification if we were going to cancel or not.
Yeah, I think we're fine canceling one or even both if you want to. The legislative session, well, we should be beyond worrying about that particular session.
Okay.
Can we do August sixteenth if we cancel one of them?
He says he's gone for the second, right? You already said that.
Oh, you're gone for the second?
We just do all of August?
Because I'd like a vacation, too.
We can, if, I mean, I've always tell the council that if we have enough lead time, we can cancel out a month, if that's your...
Well, I would like...
I would want to cancel them both if we can.
Okay.
We did not do that last year.
Because we have all been doing double duty.
Oh, boy.
If not triple duty.
Since last year.
And I think that the opportunity to take the time of what a vacation really means is important to all of us.
I like feeling punch drunk.
It's a cheap buzz.
I need a vacation, yeah.
It is.
You obviously need a vacation.
I owe my family a vacation.
That hangover, brutal.
What do you feel about September? Maybe we can...
Okay.
Oh, boy.
All right, so we don't need a motion for that, let's just...
The second and the sixteenth, right?
Yeah, the second.
August is canceled.
Done.
Vacation.
Okay.
Hang out with some penguins.
Very good. Schedule your vacations now, kiddos. Okay, so written communications, we had two, actually, we had one from Kevin Fryer, I think you all read, and also Keita Highsmith, and that's it.
I actually didn't somehow get, receive those, so can you forward them? Like, I thought maybe they ended up in my spam. I looked there.
I didn't see anything from Keita Highsmith.
And I also searched for them, so would you just be able to forward those to me?
Kevin's was...
I read Kevin's. I didn't understand it, but I read it.
Okay, but Keita's was a thank you note, Council and Ingrid.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Did you send it out?
Yeah.
Should email the council members' email, council members.
Okay, I just haven't looked at my email today, so...
Okay.
I don't have it, but I found another one of your emails in my spam today, too. So I don't know what's going on there.
Okay, that brings us to, are we finished with that? Is good?
Yep, thank you.
Maybe talk with Albert, we're having email issues for some folks. And this is, are you using iPad, or...
Yeah, it's everywhere.
Well, some times from some people. I mean, I'm getting most of your emails, but some of them end up in spam.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I would suggest to talk with Albert on what might be happening, because...
We'll follow up.
I'm having the same thing.
Yeah. Okay, well, I got this email, and I never got it. No, it's good.
You are punch drunk. We need to go home now.
Okay.
I think we have second oral communication.
Yeah, we are. We're going to do oral communications, number twos, anybody?
Yes, I was going to ask you that when you came up, but you walked away too fast.
The current library has approximately fifteen thousand volumes, I was correct, and the new one will have the capacity for about thirty thousand.
I was going to say, like, what does a hundred thousand books in one place even look like? I can't even imagine.
About five of our lives.
You must have counted them when you worked there. Hey, just add it to zero, you know, Stuart would love to add another zero to our budget, you know? At least to our reserve.
Can I do that on my budget next year?
Yeah.
Can I catch the typo?
Yeah. Okay, we'll call the meeting adjourned, huh? All right, good night, everybody.